Okay, where do I get started here? Good evening, everyone. Tonight's Park Township zoning board of appeals meeting for Monday, March third, two thousand twenty-five. I'm gonna call it to order. We've all got in front of us the the agenda for this evening. And before I get started, I guess I want to just make a real quick announcement. Looks like we got a lot of folks here. I don't know if anybody is here for short-term rental discussions, but that is not being discussed tonight. So we we have upcoming an upcoming closed session. We need to talk about timing for trying to plan for those. A special meeting for that. So more to come on that, but there will be no discussions tonight about that. So I don't want to waste your time if you're here for that. So. We'll have to talk to to Mika after after all of this and to see how she's actually going to have that published. So you probably are gonna want to reach back out to Mika very soon to find that out. Right, yeah, we we do have. I have one comment while we're talking about it. We might as well. I'm gonna make one amendment to our item eight that says next meeting scheduled for Monday, March third, which is wrong. We're actually gonna have a a discussion to figure out what our next meetings are. So we're gonna find that out hopefully this evening. So. Anyways, any other amendments to the agenda for tonight? Favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Agenda is approved. We also have minutes from the February ten meeting. I don't know if anyone has any edits, comments about those minutes. I do not. Hearing none, I guess we'll make a make a motion to approve the minutes for February ten as provided. All in favor? All in favor? Thank you, sorry. Okay. Our next item is public hearing number one. And this is a request by Michael DeVries for two side setbacks of eight feet each. Where ten feet are required per section thirty-eight dash two four six of the township code of ordinances. Said lands and premises are located at twenty-four forty-one George Avenue and in the R two L Lake Shore Residential District. Is there any more to add to that, Mika?
There's an existing structure on the property. The intent is to remove that. It's kind of a narrow parcel, and so they're kind of trying to split the difference. That's why they're the request for the two eight-foot setbacks. It's treated in your memo is one. It is two, so just want to make sure in your motion that you decide how you want to handle that.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here tonight to speak for? Okay. You please sign in, introduce yourself to us.
Yeah, you bet. My name is Mike DeVries. Thirty-eight oh seven Ravine Wood Circle in Grand Rapids. It's a summer residence at our twenty-four forty-one George. I don't have a mailbox there. Summer residence only at the moment.
Yeah, if you if you want to share anything new or anything beyond what we've been able to read here, please, please go for it.
Yes, you bet. Finish that later then. Yeah, my 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 father bought the property in sixty-five or the when when they started selling properties in Idlewood, we've been the sole owners of it ever since. He died in ninety-nine, so I took ownership of it shortly thereafter. I'm within about ten years of retirement. My wife and I have always decided we want to try to tear it down and rebuild and move out here. But we know that's a non-conforming lot forty-four feet wide. We tried to come up with a proposed plan that, as Mika had mentioned, it kind of splits the difference. I've talked to my neighbors immediately to the east, Jan Kennison at on on George. And my neighbor immediately to the west, Bill Vote, who's driveways off of Lake. Tried to come up with a plan that, you know, doesn't impact them too much. I've talked to both of them. They're both in favor of the project. The the cottage, the cottage, the current structure sits very much on the northerly part of the property. Whereas my neighbor to the west, Mr. Vote, his property is way on the south. So we're trying to maintain that vertical alignment of the property. So as the cot, the new house, of course, is larger, it goes further south than the current structure does. It doesn't impact him as much because my my place is up here, his is down here. So it doesn't quite have the the impact that it otherwise might if I would move the structure further south. In talking to Jan Kenniston, who is my neighbor to the east. You know, her, she's she's in favor of the project, although she would, if you were to speak with her, she would be like kind of bummed that, you know, I'm gonna miss my view through your property towards Lake Michigan that she currently has. But she also said she was under no. What's the word I'm looking for? She knew that there was the potential of this cottage being torn down and being replaced with the house someday when she bought that property five, six, seven years ago. The other thing that we've tried to do with the property as well to try to make it less impactful, knowing that the eight-foot side setbacks are what we requested is the second story doesn't extend the entire limits of the property. So the second story is smaller, only on the middle part of the property in an attempt to try to make the structure less imposing from that perspective as well. So we've tried to be thoughtful about it to to develop a structure that fits Idlewood. I'm guessing you've probably had lots of requests for variances in Idlewood. I don't think there's a lot of properties in Idlewood that that are don't end up with a structure that's, you know, non-conforming in some sort of way. So I guess the other one last thing I wanted to mention is the current structure only has a six-foot setback today to the east, just six feet. And and so we are making it a betterment from that perspective of getting it an eight-foot setback on the east side. We didn't try to come up with a plan to sort of maintain the existing foundation and try to use that. Use that side of the foundation to to keep it at six feet. We we thought it would be best, you know, to try to just center a new a new parcel or excuse me, a new building, eight feet on each side. So did I miss anything? Anything you want to mention? This is Clint Marcusia, my builder. In case there's questions I can't answer.
Sure, so, okay. Or do we have any questions for the applicant? I've got one. I've just, I'm curious. Your your the address says George, but do you enter your house off Lake?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the the official address, of course, as you know, twenty-four forty-one George. If you're to talk to Consumers Energy, my address is twenty-five Lake Street. There's a driveway on the very, very northerly tip of the property off of Lake. And since the houses, the cottages oriented to the north, that's the driveway we always use. We were, you know, informed by the police a long time ago. Like, if you're ever to call nine-one-one, this police are gonna show up at twenty-four forty-one George, and alls we have there is a driveway and a forest. And so you're like, you know, make that, make the Lake Street something official so that when you call nine-one, you can tell them, come to twenty-five Lake Street, which is, you know, the driveway that we use.
Okay. Is there, is that something that is gonna get changed officially? Or is that officially your address is Lake Street then? You're using?
It's a good question. I don't have a mailbox there. Okay. So, you know, we'll probably end up choosing twenty-four forty-one George since now the property will have a driveway that leads up to the to the property from there. Well, you know, we're probably just use twenty-four forty-one George. Like I said, it's not gonna take a lot of changing of addresses and stuff because we don't get mail there right now.
Yep, understood. Anyone else have questions? Mr. Duffins?
Correct, yep.
I think we're all set. If you don't have any further add, you can take a seat.
Thank you.
Does anyone else here that would like to speak for or against this item? I'll open it up to that, but seeing none, I'll close that. And open it up for more discussion.
I believe so.
And it was in support. Okay, so like Mika said, we're talking about two side setbacks on this that are basically combined into one, just centering the home. Eight feet each side.
I'm sorry, could I ask one more question? Ask a question? The current cottage, as it sits, is thirty-five feet off the northerly property line, which is an outlot with nothing built on it. And we are seeking to maintain that thirty-five foot setback so that the new structure would, you know, start the same northerliness as the as the current one. Did that require?
It didn't require variance because we have something called front yard averaging. There's a provision in the zoning code that allows for that, and that made that that setback conforming.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that didn't.
Yes, good, good catch.
Okay.
This is section thirty-eight of the city of the building ordinance for the reasons that factor number one is met, that being that certain clients with the zoning ordinance regulating the minimum area yard setbacks running high in full or density or other regulation would render, following with those restrictions of the zoning ordinance, are necessarily working somewhere. In this case, the record indicates that the parcel is forty-five feet wide. Even though there are narrow parcels in this neighborhood, forty-five feet wide is unusually narrow, even for this neighborhood. For that reason, we that fact definitely met. With regard to the second standard, granting the variance would do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to other property owners in the zoning district. In this instance, the current setbacks would only allow for twenty-four foot wide, twenty-four foot wide home. The applicant is proposing a reasonable twenty-eight foot wide home. The really good plus by the applicant is relatively modest, you know, it was based on the information presented to us, it's not clear it would have any significant impact on the neighboring properties. Also noting that it actually would locate the home to be further to the west away from the creates additional separation. Third factor being that the play of the property owner applicants due to the unique circumstances of the property and not due to general conditions of the zoning district. The existing person here is already not performing. Its size configuration does not reflect general conditions of the zoning district and therefore that's not giving a bad I think of the practical difficulties unless you're not self-created. And there's evidence in the record that the applicant has created the practical difficulties leading to those three plus for the site areas there.
Great, thanks, Ms. Morgan. Do you have support? Yeah, support. Roll call? Discussion. Gotcha, sorry. Before we do take the vote, I guess we're gonna open it up for discussion amongst us. Have we got any additional comments?
This is a current request in these neighborhoods. It's become the way they were plotted. In fact, it's more strict in the early days in terms of enforcing setbacks. In fact, we established new setbacks at some point beyond time that some of these places were constructed. So I think the applicant is in good stead.
Yeah, I think they've submitted a perfectly reasonable revision to the parcel in support. Okay. With that, I think we'll take roll call at this point.
I can do the call, yeah. Mr. E?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Payne Nyak?
Yes.
Mr. Cerny?
Yes.
Mr. Chick?
Yes. All right, the variance is approved. You should be seeing a letter from Mika soon. Okay. Moving on to our next agenda, item number five for public hearing number two. Mika, would you be able to introduce that for us?
Yes, indeed. This is this is a relatively small expansion of an existing structure. The wall changes quite a bit, but it's an expansion within an existing non-conforming setback of twenty-four feet where twenty-eight feet are required. So this is another one where rear yard averaging brings down the required setback where the zoning district would normally require fifty feet. In this case, it only requires twenty-eight. They're asking for twenty-four. That brings it to the rear wall. There's already an existing rear wall that's twenty-four feet off the property line, and this does extend that rear wall. It is a pretty significant extension of the rear wall. I think it's forty feet or something along those lines. The memo states the exact number. So it is a long extension of the rear wall, but it's not, it doesn't go any further back into the backyard than it currently is.
Before we start, I guess I got a question, Omeka. So we've got two front yards.
Correct.
And we're saying that the rear yard is the west side of the house.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, and the north side is compliant. There's nothing to discuss.
Yes.
Okay, this will make it clear for all of us as well here.
I double check that.
Okay. But it is considered a rear yard on the side, the west side?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I don't know which way rear would be, you know, to the north or the west.
These corner lines. I know, I went back through definitions, and that was why I included those in the in the memo, because I went back from a couple times to ask myself if that was correct, and I believe it is.
Okay. All right, is the applicant here tonight? Is there any additional things you want to discuss? You're welcome to do it. If you want to approach the podium, you can sign in and tell us more if you if you think there's more that you need to discuss with us.
Because it was under two feet, the deck was okay. Yep, that was okay, yeah.
Yeah, you're not at a height that requires the variance, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. So it appears that there's an existing two-stall garage, and they're proposing to add a two-stall garage for a total of four stalls. Is that your understanding?
I don't know that I counted the stalls. Maybe maybe the applicant can answer that because I'll have to dig into the planning. If you could go up to the microphone, please.
It's signed in for us, too. So we have your record up there.
Yes, the garage, I wanted to add, the reason for it is because to put a boat in there. And I would, I would put a driveway to it right next to the other driveway. So that's why it's twenty-two feet wide. And I want I wanted to have loom around it. So that's the reasoning for that area right there. The back area was to add on to the existing bedroom, which is somewhat small. We wanted to put a sitting room that was flush to that that garage area in the back. So the whole home would be basically square. What we're doing, and then that's on that. And then on the deck, on the south side, which is the opposite side of the garage. We just there's nobody right across from the deck. I'm lucky that there's none, none of the houses have any windows coming towards me. They're they're both have their garages with no height and windows coming. So I thought that would be okay, but basically, that's what I'm trying to do. I'm new from here. I love the Holland area, and I just bought the home, and I'm just kind of trying to make it my own for right now.
I don't have the worksheet in front of me, but I typically calculate that, and I do remember doing that for this one. It's they've got some living space up top, and then they're also adding this sitting room. And so my recollection was that that met the standards and the ordinance.
Mika, what about, in the in the lines of that question? What is, is this meeting the ratio requirements as well?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I think that's what, yeah, my recollection is.
Percentage of built versus partial size, okay?
Yeah. Oh, built versus partial size. We don't have like a a land coverage.
Okay, that's what I wondered.
Yeah, we don't have that, so.
It just seems like a big footprint for that property. It's the reason I was wondering if that was something that was.
Sure.
That's all. Okay. If you could approach and ask, that'd be great.
These projects may take a year or two to do, and I'm just wondering if if they pass. What's the timeline? Is there any timeline that I I would have to have to do this or?
Yeah, you have one year from the time the variance is granted to make, I forget the language, substantial progress. So you'd have to have the pro- the project underway within one year.
Within one year. And then if I didn't, would I have to come back and do it again?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions for the applicant from the board?
No.
If not, I'll, yeah.
There would be a lot of concrete on that side of the house where there's double driveway. It sounds like there would be an addition of a similar to driveway leading up to this here. Speak to what your plans are for your for the driveway or the access to the new garage area? Are you planning on?
They were completely slow over the driveway right now appears to be twenty, twenty-five feet long. Yeah. And then I would, when I would add the twenty-two, I think it would just go right across. It would be a large driveway all the way to the
All the way to the street?
Yeah. I would want a driveway.
Yeah.
You wouldn't want anything else that's coming in this.
The the road commission is probably going to limit you to, I want to say thirty-five feet is their maximum at the roadway. That's that's their call. That's not our call as far as that goes, but that's typically what their limit would be. And that's for them. And then if you wanted to have additional conditions, obviously, different questions.
Yeah. So I got, I've got one question, I guess, maybe for Mika or the applicant still. So I'm looking at the survey. We're talking about twenty-four feet, but if this is flush, that the house is built flush, is it still, are we talking about twenty-four point nine feet?
Yes.
As the survey states, okay. Otherwise, it's like another, you know.
It is, that's true. That's an additional flight.
Right. Okay. Anything else, board? If not, I'm gonna open it up for the public to, is there anyone here to like to speak for or against the this item? Seeing no one, I'll close public discussion of that. I'll be looking for more discussion from the board or a motion. We've got, the session is different. We've only got three standards that are required for this particular item, so.
Great, we should note for the record that we received a channel season in support of this application.
Thank you. I guess, Mika, sorry, I got one more question. Do we know what the north setback is gonna be?
He goes eleven.
It's eleven feet, where ten is required?
Correct.
Okay.
So the north side, I believe, is eleven. The west side is the twenty-four, twenty-four point nine. And then you've got the front yard setbacks on either side, which are already existing.
But the east side would have to be forty feet, right, to be compliant?
The east side.
Yeah, the other front yard on Pine?
I think that that was another case of the front yard, um, the front yard averaging.
Okay. I was just adding up the math here from what I see on the survey, on the east side, I see a dimension string of thirty-one point four feet.
Yeah, this is, this would be a good one to have my, um, worksheet in front of me, and I don't have that right here.
Okay.
But I do, so I don't know if I've ever shown this to you guys, but when I, when I'm evaluating an application, eh, when a building permit comes in, or for a ZBA application. I have a, a worksheet that I go through that has all of the, all of the setbacks, and then on the reverse side, it has, if there's any averaging to be done, it's got kind of. It's kind of broken down that way, so, um, I go through that with all the applications, so I feel pretty confident that that's the case, but I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. Good. Okay. I'll make a motion. Uh, to approve. The proposed, uh. Side yard setback of twenty-four point nine feet. Where twenty-eight is required.
A rear yard.
For re- oh, sorry, I said side.
Yeah.
Rear yard, set, setback. Uh, where twenty-eight feet is required per averaging. Based on the three standards from session thirty-eight dash four-eight-three E two. First, uh, standard stating that the proportion of the main wall, which has been altered by the addition. Uh, again, we think we, we discussed that the length of the rear wall would be extended here, um, from twenty-nine point eight feet. To right around forty-six feet in length, although significant, um, it may. May be appropriate, given that the relief is only four feet, once averaging is considered. Between the dimensions requested. Uh, standard, second standard that the overall effect of the proposed addition on adjoining properties in the character of the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed addition would bring the length of the house to seventy-five point eight feet, the rear yard neighbor has a house that's approximately seventy-three feet in length. Um, as does a neighbor across the street, this is generally in line with what we're seeing with the structures in, in that, uh, immediate vicinity. And believe that standard can be met based on that. And the final standard that the addition shall not be less than five feet from the side of rear lot lines, and shall not be less than ten feet. From the front lot line, and there's nothing that says that that can't be met, and so hopefully that hasn't been met. Is there any additional comments from anybody regarding that, what I stated? It would, yeah, so we need to amend that motion to. Also include, um, the front yard off Pine Street to limit the approach to whatever their requirements. Will be from the Adel County Road Commission. Thank you. Do we have support for the amended motion? Okay, I guess, for, okay. Maybe we can take a roll call or vote?
Mr. Cerny?
Yes.
Ms. Payne Nyak?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Ead?
Yeah.
Chair, please?
Yes. All right, your variance is, is approved? Should be looking for a letter from Mika soon on that. Okay. Guess at this time, our next item on the agenda is, is the public comment session, so I'll open it up for a public comment for anyone who. Desires to talk about whatever is on your mind here. If there is none, oh. If you could sign in and for us, please, state your name.
My name is Mary Nussbaum, I live at four-twenty Spruce Street, our township just down the world. I appreciate you announcing in advance that you're not gonna be discussing short-term rental business self in advance. Um, I know that's why many of us are here tonight. While you're not gonna be discussing it, I would ask that you at least keep in mind as you wade through the material for and against. We are residential neighborhoods, single-family, low-density, we live there for a reason. When your home next to you that was a single-family residence goes from a three-bedroom. Two-bath to a five-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, that used to sleep eight, now sleeps sixteen overnight. That comes with a lot of wear and tear for your neighbors as well, so. Please just keep those things in mind as you go through all of the reasonings and the wheres and whys and such, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I'll close a public comment and. Next item on our agenda, um, we're gonna make a motion. Does ZBA go in a closed session pursuant to section eight-one-H of the Open Meetings Act? Uh, to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure pursuant to section thirteen-one-G of the Freedom of Information Act. Need support? All in favor? We got a roll call to go on the closed session?
Um, Mr. Ead?
Yes.
Ms. Warren? Um, Ms. Payne Nyak?
Yes.
Mr. Cerny?
Yeah.
Chair, please?
Yes. Okay. I'll make a motion to go into open session.
Support.
All in favor? Okay. Next item on our agenda is next meeting. What we're trying to figure out is what happens at the next meeting. And when, when is it? So I know we've got, do we have a normal item on the agenda?
We do, we have one regular application for this, and the regular meeting is contrary to your agenda scheduled for, uh. March thirty-first, as opposed to March third.
Right, do we know what it is? Or?
I don't remember.
Dimensional?
I think so, I don't remember.
Okay.
Since we got a light agenda that day, it makes sense to schedule a hearing on.
I'd be in favor of that.
Okay, does that work?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll have regular members all are able to be in attendance at that meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
And did we wanna say it, was it? Five-thirty, what did we discuss?
Yeah, five-thirty, but that, we're doing it a little bit earlier, so you guys have a little more time to discuss, okay, so.
So long as the applicant is already.
Yeah.
That they either wants to, to update or will give you a time change.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I can confirm that with them and see what they'd like to do about that, so, um, you'd like to do. March thirty-first at five-thirty, but confirming with current applicant to make sure that that is something that works for them.
And the location to be determined.
Okay.
Action staff on the, the location given.
Okay. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that settled within the next couple of days, so.
Great.
Okay. Be fun.
If you need to talk about any other future dates or this particular nature, you could see them.
Um, so other, some other dates might be forthcoming, so we'll have the public hearing at, at this meeting. Um, we expect that that's probably gonna be long, um, if that proves to be the case, um, we'll be looking at a discussion meeting. Uh, I'll send out some possible dates for that, and then, you know, we'll publish that as soon as we kinda get that situated, so we'll probably make a. Attentive mid-April meeting for discussion sake, uh, and then, um, if there's additional. Anything else, decision needed, um, then that would be at the main meeting, so, looking at March thirty-first, um, sometime undetermined. Mid-April, and then potentially, um, the early May regular meeting, uh, would be the times when we think that the, this might be discussed. And decided, just kinda depending on how public hearing and discussion and comment goes, as far as how long all of that takes.
Yep, makes sense. Is that something we need to? Make a motion on? Or just the advisement is good? Okay.
Okay.
All right, I think that brings us to item nine. For adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Meeting adjourned, thanks, everybody.